Okay, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, July 22, 2024. Just want to remind people, please note from June 17, my notice that July 29, that date is going to change. It's going to move out into August. We've had some construction delays, but the main entrance of the municipal building will be closed due to renovations. During this time, the municipal building will be open to public by appointment only. We ask that residents attend meetings via Zoom. For full details, visit cityofgroton.com. So that will be updated in the next couple of days. This delay was identified today. So with that, roll call?
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Councilor Tally, Councilor Sheffield, and Councilor Norris via Zoom are present.
Thank you. So we have a quorum. We'll continue the new business annual comprehensive financial report. Ron?
Yep, so the mayor just wanted to have me give a little debrief on the report. It was received for fiscal year end, June 30, 2023. So in your packet, I just kind of gave you a couple of pages just to summarize it instead of giving you a copy of the 126-page document. It is available online, so you can click on it and review it as you will. So the first couple pages that were in your packet, so it's one, two, four pages. This is the governance letter from the auditors. It's to the council, to the mayor, just talking about if there were any significant audit findings or issues, which there were not. So that letter just kind of outlines that for the council and mayor. The next page is the independent auditors' report. So that's just the audit report from the auditors in the front of the financial statements that gives their opinion that the financial statements presented were fairly in all material respects, so there was no issues with it. So it was a clean opinion. The next page is what I gave you is just the exhibits from the front of the document after the MDNA and transmitter letter. So these are really the numbers for all of the city funds. So when we look at what's numbered as page 14, exhibit one, that gives you a very high level of the city as a whole with the governmental activities. That consists of the general funds, special revenue funds, capital funds. The business-type activity, that's going to be the electric water sewer, and then the basural power as a component unit. So that gets a very high level when you look at the governmental activities on this page. This, what the intent of this exhibit was, is to roll up the city as if it were a business, which includes the capital assets, the long-term debt, and everything, and give you the big picture of where the city's financial position is. Exhibit two is just the revenue expense for outlining in the same buckets. Page 16, this is where it breaks down the actual, on a fund basis. So it'll be the general fund and then the non-major governmental funds. The non-major governmentals would be the special revenue, the capital non-recurring, and the subvets memorial fall into that bucket. So the general fund is the main fund of the city. So you see that year-end, the total assets were just under 20 million, and same with the fund balance and liabilities. So where I want to talk about on this page is when we look at our undesignated fund balance as a percentage of our expenditures and transfers out. So unsigned fund balance at June 30, 2023 was 6.4 million. And our total expenditures and transfers out, which would be on page 18, the 16 million and the 1.3 million equal 18 million. So we're currently, at the year-end, we were 35% of undesignated or unassigned fund balance to our expenditures and transfers out. We look to maintain a 20 to 25% on that. So if we take 25% of those expenditures, we are, it would bring our fund balance down to 4.5 million or a reduction of 1.85. That's the number, if you recall, when we're going through the budget, we use 1.9 million for a surplus of fund balance. So that's how that was calculated, just to kind of walk through that calculation where we come up with how we use that fund balance. In theory, if we were sitting at that 25% amount right here, we wouldn't have been able to budget that and help reduce taxes. So just kind of a quick calculation on that. Then it goes in on page 20. This is where it's going to break out the business-type activities, where you'll see the standalone for electric, for water, and for sewer. So this is the balance sheet on page 20. It also includes the internal service fund, which is our self-help fund. Page 21 is the P and L for those same funds, the electric water sewer and the internal service fund. And then the cash flow follows. The next page, it combines the pension and the OPEB trust funds into one. There are parts in the financial statements where it does have them broken out separately, the pension and the OPEB. There's a lot of notes on that, especially with the actual evaluations, assumptions that are used. That all can be found in the notes. But the one thing that I did want to point out on here, the pension was 85.72% funded at 630, 2023 against the net liability, and the OPEB is funded at 64.44%, which we are really, really high with our funding for our pension versus a lot of the other municipalities, even though it does sound like a smaller number. And the reason why, two years back, we were actually over 100%, we're at a net pension asset, but because this does take into account the market value, it does, it could have fluctuations based on the market. So at that point in time, we were the 85.72. So that's like a very high-level summary of the front financials and all the exhibits. Like, so there's a lot of detail within the footnotes if you wanted to get into more detail. And if there's any council that does want to sit and go through it in a more detail, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, thank you for working hard on this. I know that every year, this is a lot of work. And can you just really quickly remind us how the auditors do this? Like, they come in and visit, or how, like, a little bit, like a two-minute of the process of how this is done?
Yep, so the, from the audit side, they will start requesting documents as early as now. In July, they'll send over an information request. And for the most part, it's the same every year, the documentation that they're looking for. Obviously, their big thing that they look at is the general ledgers, and they want all of that detail. And then they do a lot of testing based on the information that we give them. So they'll look at, for an example, they will want to see a check register, and then they'll go through and select various invoices to do expenditure testing, to make sure that the process was followed in accordance with our policies as far as the purchasing goes. They'll look at AP at year-end to make sure that the AP cutoff was done in the correct period, that invoices that were for the 2023 year were put in the 2023 year, or if they're actually for the 2024 year, to make sure that they went into the right period. So those are just some examples. A lot of the testing, they do demographic data testing with the pension and the OPEB to make sure the information we give to the actuaries is accurate, that, so that way they can confirm that the actual reports are untrue, accurate, and they can use those. So there's just a lot of testing. It is a lot of work, and I need to give a lot of credit to the finance staff as a whole, both on the utility and the city side, because it is a lot of work. There are a lot of information requests from the auditors and back and forth. Like, they're either onsite, or we go back and forth via secure email sites.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield?
Ron, is our net position improved from year-end 2022, or are we essentially around the same?
Yep. So it actually dropped a little bit. So if you go to, which is page number 18, you'll see that the actual change in fund balance dropped by just under 700,000 from the previous year. And that's just for the general fund side.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the annual comprehensive financial report? Okay, thank you, Ron. All right, moving on, Groton Utilities Meter Repair. Justin, that's you.
So on July 10, due to a power failure in one of our meter testing tools, we did an emergency purchase of a new meter bench, and the price was $63,000. And this was, we bought this in emergency manner since we're in the middle of a meter replacement program, and our, our staff was essentially out of work, if you will, without purchasing that new test bench. So what we did was we bought a new test bench, and then we had somebody come in and fix our old test bench. So now we have redundancy of our system. So we have the new one, and then it was $2,500 to fly somebody from Indiana here to fix our old one, which also was one of the reasons why we just decided to spend the emergency funds to get a new, a new bench, because we had to wait for that technician to come out and fix our old one. So we didn't have availability to her immediately.
Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Was this the day of the, that power outage? Is that what this?
No, no.
Oh, this is a different problem?
Different, different problem. It happened to be a power surge that put our old one out, but it wasn't the same, same thing.
So now should that happen again?
We have a redundant system. So we fixed the old one and then purchased a new one.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council at 5:00 August 2024.
So move.
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Shore Ave Sewal Pipe, Bill?
Good evening, council. So tonight, I'm here in regards to the Sewal project, seeking approval from you for the funding of roughly 500 feet of ductile iron pipe. And that is for, that's the Forest Sewer Main coming from the Eastern Point substation or the pump station feeding up towards Pfizer and down the hill. Okay, so what came about with the project? We found that the Forest Main pipe that's in the road down on Shore Avenue, we knew it was near the Sewal, but as we began to excavate and dig down there, we found out that it was very, very close, and in fact, close enough that when we had to put the soldier wall, the temporary wall in place, that it was going to impact that pipe. This request is to fund the design, the engineering, the installation, and the material to replace roughly 500 feet of 14-inch diameter ductile iron pipe. Questions?
Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So this isn't something that could be lumped in with the Shore Avenue Sewal project because it's sewer-specific?
It does support the project, but in the, in my mind, in the end, Groton Utilities is going to own that pipe, right? That pipe is going to be purchased by us, which means we'll depreciate it, we'll own it from here going forward. It is something that, again, if we knew about it, perhaps it could have been caught, you know, captured, but it was really unknown to where the placement for that pipe was. And until we started to excavate down there, we found out that we were going to have to fund that replacement piece. There's currently a bypass line. If you take a walk down there, you'll see there's a bypass line in there right now to allow us to pump sewage from the Eastern Point Pump Station out, but it was that close that we had to put a bypass line in, just to continue with construction.
We, you want to ask the next question, because I have some additional. So we did not realize how close that pipe was until after the project had already been awarded. And so that's why we're coming to the council now to replace this pipe. And they're down there putting the soldier piles in now, and actually, one of the piles actually hit the old AC concrete pipe. So it would have hit the Forest Main, which would not have been a good thing.
Yeah, it would have hit it, should we not have put the bypass line in.
So this, it was a good decision to bypass, and it's a good decision to replace this pipe. Plus, it's old, as best as concrete piping. So you had additional comments?
So is the work for this going to be done all in-house? Are we going to need contractors, or what's that going to look like?
So, so we're going to ask the company that's down there right now to give us a price for this, for that work. So we have Wright Pierce onboard that we utilize all the time. They gave us a probable cost. They're going to write up a document to support the request for the labor for that. We'll purchase the material, and we'll give them the material. We're hoping, anticipating that they're going to perform the work. Should they come back with a price that exceeds our value, then we're going to look at either self-performing the work ourselves or getting another company. Really hoping that they work with us to kind of become, you know, to make it fluid down there, to get the work done quickly.
So we used a large chunk of the contingency with the bypass. So that's why, that's another reason that we're doing this this way.
Okay, so there isn't a vendor chosen, so are you asking for us to vote to approve these funds regardless of which vendor we go with?
Correct. This is to support the engineering, the design, the materials, and the construction. And we're, we've already been communicating with the company that's down there, Abarrio, and anticipating that they're going to do it. I feel very comfortable that they're going to have it, but, but I'm prepared with a plan in place that should it not work out very well, we've already started discussions on, should we have to self-perform it or get others, we'll, we'll do that.
So is there a reason we didn't separate it out, and we know we're going to pick Wright Pierce?
Wright Pierce is the company that we use for the design, the design and engineering. Yep, that's it.
Right, but the cost?
The, I'm just, the only piece that's really a variable right now is the installation part. We're, we already know the price.
But that's all included in the 350,000, right?
That will pay.
So we have to approve all of it. My issue is, if we know the vendor for these two pieces, and we don't know the vendor for the end piece, why would we not vote and approve the pieces that we know the vendors? I don't love voting and approving the construction for a project when I don't know who's going to perform it. That's my issue. So is there a reason why we didn't separate them out with the pieces that are known?
Yep.
And make sense?
I feel very confident that they'll be doing the work. The only thing that's, we're just prepared, should there be a concern, we're preparing that we have to self-perform it or get others. I'm just trying to stay ahead of it so we can, the project has an end date, looking to get that all done. So the intent is to get the money to do all of the work, and we have the probable cost for that, and that's where we, that's how we came up with the $350,000. We are not locked in right at this time with Abarrio.
But we're being asked to approve it without knowing who's going to do the work?
So were we to need to issue another purchase order over $50,000? We have to, we have to get that approved also. We, we need to approve the money because it's an unbudgeted expense. So once we approve the money as a budgeted, that basically, we can treat it as budgeted, we'll put out the purchase order, which is well less than 50. It's like, less than 20. It's not a lot of money. To the engineering firm, the engineering firm's going to design it. If the utility has to issue a purchase order for the pipe, which I'm going to guess 120,000, we'll actually have to come and get that approved again. But we will have it funded at that point, and then we can issue the purchase order. And we may rush that through really quick once this is approved, because we have to issue, to issue a purchase order by our purchasing policy, we have to come back. But we also really need the funds approved so we can move forward with the design, so we can order the materials off of the design. So we're really doing this really quick to get the design purchase order lent out, which I'm going to guess is about 12 to 15,000 dollars.
That's correct. So the design, roughly 15,000 dollars. We are concerned with the delivery of material, the availability to get the material, and that's pushed out a month. So hence the urgency to get this through, to get the funding for that.
So, and this is coming out of your capital funds, right? Non-bonded?
Non-bonded.
Capital?
Correct.
What does that do for the future of your capital fund?
It, it brings down, it down low with cash. So the sewer company's total revenue every year is about $4 million. So this is about 10% of the total revenue in any given year. So $350,000 is a lot of money for the sewer company.
So how does that impact your future anticipated projects for the sewer department?
The way that finance advised us to move forward was treated as unbudgeted, so it won't affect this year's capital projects, but it definitely will drag us down in capability in how much to move forward in the future years.
Is it going to impact user fees?
In this account, everything impacts user fees.
So having to do this project now, which we didn't anticipate, is possibly going to increase our sewer rates at some point in the next six months?
I would say that about everything we do in the account. The answer is yes.
I still don't love voting without knowing the vendor that's going to perform the work. So are you saying that when you do get that quote from that vendor to perform the work, if it's Abarrio, which we're hoping it is, that you're going to come back here to get approval for that, or no?
We'll, we'll actually talk to Ron about the way that that was put out, because if it's treated as a change order, that's being funded by the utility, it may come through as a change order to you guys via the city, because Abarrio is the city's contract. That's yet to be determined.
Hold on a second. So you're, you're okay with everything except for the fact that the final installation contractor's not been identified?
Yes, I mean, it's clearly a necessary expense. I don't love voting on something that doesn't tell us we don't have the quote, and we don't have a guarantee that someone's going to perform this work.
Can we, can we break, can we break that out? And, and with the promise that we'll break that out, and everything that, with the exception of what we think it's going to cost for the vendor? So you get everything approved except the vendor, and then when you get the vendor, then we get that approved, even if we have to do special cows and special mayor cows meetings?
So request funding for the engineering, the design, the materials?
Everything but the installation.
Minus the installation.
Right. Can we break that out, and then have that ready for the mayor and council meeting of August 5?
Can it?
We, Deputy Mayor Depot, you still have the floor?
Considering, so the resolution does not name the contractor, which I think would mean that you would have to come with a change order, no? Because that has to be listed?
The, so if the utility issues a purchase order to do the work, we have to come back if it's more than $50,000 anyway.
Even though we already, even if we already approved this?
You're approving a project total so we can move forward. We'd even have to discuss how to get a rush purchase order through for the materials if it's over $50,000. So we're actually just approving a pot of money so the project can move forward in the utility? Because we always work on budgeted projects, we can't really spend money on it unless we have an approved pot of money. But once we issue a purchase order over 50, we'll have to come back, because that's currently the way that we're organized. So I would anticipate that the engineering would be done over the next couple of weeks, and immediately, we're going to want to go to the next utility commission with a purchase order for the material, which I'm guessing is 100, I made up a number, 120,000. And that, we're going to hot-shot rate to you so we can get that on order. Or maybe if there's a issue with lead time on the materials, the mayor and I might decide to move that ahead right before the meeting or something, based on availability of the material. But we got to lock that material in, and hopefully, we can get this done before maybe the asphalt plants close in the winter. I mean, I think that's what the goal is.
Right.
So we really want to approve the project, and then let us work with the best way to move it. Because if we self-perform the work and don't let it out to a contractor, we'll have the pot of money for our staff to move forward and just move ahead.
Okay.
Because we won't, we won't be funded for that unless we go for the whole project total.
So as long as it comes back to us, I'm fine with that.
You will, you will definitely see before work moves ahead, an approval for something, for a contractor, whatever. We've got, that's the way the purchasing policy is laid out currently. So you will see it. You will feel comfortable with what's moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Sheffield, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, and going back to, like I said, we were approving the money, basically, just to make sure we have the money for the project moving forward. Now, is there going to be a possibility where if this company, if the contract isn't good for us, will we, will you put it out to bid for other contractors to, you know, to bid on and then see where we're at? Now, my issue now would be, is 350 enough when we have going out to bid whoever, you know, if we don't get this group to jump onboard?
We have a high level of confidence that 350 is going to carry that, to cover that, absolutely so. It's just, we had, you know, we're just teasing it out. We don't know how it's going to go with Abarrio. Of course, they got the whole project down there. So does some wiggle room there a little bit. So maybe while they're trenching, they can drop the pipe, you know, if they don't take the whole thing and push back a little bit, we may have to self-perform a little bit of the work, but perhaps not the whole project. So there's some liberty there. We're, we're looking to see if we can work things out with them, and we've already started discussing it with them. We're just waiting to see their initial, their final price, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so this is truly just the money upfront, and we do have some contingency built into that.
Okay.
Counselor Norris, you have the floor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, gentlemen, you got to start again. So my question is, how, first, how did, how did you come up with this $350,000?
We utilized, so we have Wright Pierce onboard. We reached out to them and asked them to come up with a probable cost. So we have a document from them, which I'm happy to share with you later, that came up with this cost. So that included the bill of material. We estimated, we're looking to have the work performed on a price per foot, and that's really a best price, instead of a time and material, where we felt that we were at more risk. We, we decided to come up with a price per foot, depending on, you know, we estimated 500 feet, it might be 400 feet, we might do better. Right now, there's some unknown down there, right where they put the Sewal in. There's some underground utilities, there's an existing gravity feed, sewer that feeds down to the pump station, is also a potable water line that's in the road down there too. So I can't tell you exactly, until we dig it out further, that I can run it as the crow flies. So there might have to be a little bit of turning right, turning left, et cetera, to get over to the end. So, but Wright Pierce designed this package for us, they came up with the probable cost, and we added the contingency.
So the question is, because I'm reading the resolution here, and it says, funding for the insulation of approximately da-da-da-da-da, but it doesn't say who's performing the insulation, installation. So my question is, if you're doing the work, meaning public works, fine, but if a company's doing it, why did this not go through the bid process?
We, we have not put it out to bid yet. This is just, this, this estimate that we have is from our engineering firm, the company that we utilize all the time. We'd asked them to come up with a probable cost for this, so that we can get the money in place, so that we can order the material and get things going. This did not go out to bid yet. We don't know who's going to self, who's going to perform the work yet. Once we get the approval for this, we're going to get the material ordered as soon as we can. We're going to get Wright Pierce onboard to do the design for us, and then we're going to get a price from Abarrio for the installation. We're going to get Wright Pierce on board to do the design for us and then we're going to get a price from Abario for the installation. Should it not be, should, should we not feel that Abario is giving us best price? We'll look at self-performing it or having others do it. Or have Abario do a piece of it and we'll do a portion of it.
Well, I guess that's where I'm coming from then. With all the pieces that you're explaining, would that not then change the bid? Or the RFP? Because then you would be saying, we don't, don't throw in the materials because we're going to purchase that separately. Or, so I, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. We, we, I feel that we seem to be working in reverse order. It, it's, it's almost like you're asking us, or me, give me the three hundred and fifty thousand and then I'll figure it out. And the figuring it out could come from four different sides. So that's what I'm trying to wonder is, for example, could you tell me what it would cost for materials and supplies?
I can't give you that exact right now because it's unknown. We haven't dug out the road yet. So they're still in mid-construction down there. We just have a-
So that's my point.
That's why we utilize the professionals for this.
So my point is then, why wouldn't we do the investigative work? Or are you saying, hey, we can't do the investigative work because we need to move quickly and get the pipe in? I'm just trying to wrap my head around the, uh, the order of the project or the management of the project, of what comes first, in what order. Would it make sense to give you just engineering money or probe work to figure out what exactly needs to be done? And then come back and say, you're going to hit a RFP where you're going to get everything? Or we're only going to do upfront material and supplies, contract, inside door? I feel there's a lot of variables in here. Because technically speaking, even though you're asking for three fifty, it could come in a lot higher.
So currently, we're just approving a pot of money so that the utility can move forward and even do the engineering work. Because the way that the utility, the, the way the utility's arranged is until we have an approved project. So we're basically budgeting the project. By approval today, you're allowing us to have a budgeted project. We will move forward and do all the rest of the approvals through the appropriate, um, levels as the project becomes more defined. But we can't even define it and move forward until we have an approved pot of money to move forward with the project. So you, you will approve the purchase for the material. You won't, the, the engineering work is, is a fairly small amount. We can approve that. That's less than fifty. But you will approve the approval for the materials and you will approve the approval for the contractor. If a G, if a GC does it, if a Bario does it, it could be a change order to the existing contract funded through the utility that goes through a different way. And if the utility self-performs, the installation in three fifty is enough, we should be all set.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I think part of the hangup is this is not normally how we approve things. Have we had to do this on any other projects that you can think of?
I, I cannot think of a project we've actually done like this. Because normally we're working on budgeted or planned projects that we have a bucket of money to move forward with. But this, since it's just coming out of an unbudgeted bucket, we don't even know how to move forward until we do this approval so that it's treated as budgeted.
Right. So I think that's what, what's throwing us all off is this is not normal.
Sure.
Um, but getting the project approved is a time-sensitive thing.
The, the, this, we want to move forward as fast as possible.
Correct.
We need to support the city's, the rest of the city's project and we definitely don't want to get in the way. Because if we slow down the project, it will cost money on either the city side or the utility side, one way or the other. So we're trying to just fold it together, keep moving as fast as possible.
So I, I think part of my, the conflict a little bit too is that if we're going to, essentially if we went with Abario, it would be as a preferred vendor because they're already working down there, correct?
Correct.
So I think my inclination would be when we get the quote from Abario, if we can also provide supporting material of why we can't perform the work ourselves for cheaper, which is probably going to be the case that we can't, I would assume. But at least have that, at least somewhat of a comparison to show like this is what they've quoted. This is what it would cost us to do it ourselves, if we even have the capability to do it ourselves with the, you know, manpower that we have. So that at least we can see that. Does that make sense? Because I think that's, uh, Councilor Norris was asking about the, the bid process and normally we would put something out to bid. This is time-sensitive and we've already got another project going down there. It's an odd situation, uncommon situation for us. So I think for me, what I would like to see is when you do come back with that quote from Abario, whenever that is, if you can also give us an estimate, obviously it's not, not going to be exact because we don't know exact, but an estimate of what it would cost us to do that in-house and why we can or can't do that work ourselves and why it's best to go with them. And then to provide the, the information from Abario on how they intend to complete that work. Um, the other question actually that I did think of too is, do we know how this impacts or will it impact if Abario does the work, the length of that project? Because I know I get questions all the time of how much longer is the road going to be closed? And, um, people, when you explain the scope of the project, people are not mad that the road is closed so that the road doesn't fall into the ocean. People are pretty happy that we're fixing it. But, um, still, I would like to be able to have that information for them to be able to say, we ran into this snafu, this whole pipe needs to be replaced. This is how much time it's probably going to add to the project.
Yeah. So I can get that for you as well. And that's a great topic. You know, we talked about the project. This wasn't our project right from the get-go. We're really in support, if that makes sense, in coming in. So we made, you know, made aware of this a few weeks ago, right? So we're trying to be quick, supporting and try to get everything done. I did speak with Abario down there. Should they be the vendor that gets the work, they'll be doing both jobs in parallel. So we're hoping, I'm being told that they're going to be building the wall in sections. So as they excavate, uh, let's just say a hundred feet of wall, they'll put the pipe in place then, backfill that and go along that way. So will it impact them a little bit? But I talked to their manager down there and they said they'll probably bring additional people on, on for the project to support that. So, and being mindful about the end date for that with the, with the asphalt plants, et cetera, and shutting down. So they're eager to get going on it as well. We would have reached to them for a price already, but we really don't have the design piece yet, the engineered part. So I can't give them a packet to give you a, a bid on until I have approval to, which I need to be funded by through Wright Pierce, right?
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So let me address a couple of questions, or let me address the one question and then add a little bit more. So the original project length was a hundred and eighty days, six months. So we should be done, I think, in the November, December timeframe. We're trying to make sure that we get done before the asphalt plants because we really don't want to, before they shut down. What we really don't want to do is we don't want to pave the road and then dig the road back up. And we're not going to do that because you've got a big pipe sticking out in the middle of the road. So this, this needs to be done. The other thing that they're doing right now, I think they should be complete by now, is the soldier piles that they're driving. These are probably ten inch, maybe twelve inch pipes that they're driving in. And that is to hold up the road structure so that that doesn't collapse when they, they remove the C-wall. So once they get that C-wall constructed, poured in place, then they will be able to dig to have a trench available. Once they cut these soldier piles down, they'll be able to, uh, dig the trench so that they can run this. And it, it should not negatively impact the, uh, the project. But I think we're going to have to wait on the time on, timeline on that until after we see what the, the design is and then get them to look at it for a cost and a time. Okay? Any other questions or comment? Councilor Norris, is your hand, you okay? Councilor Norris, you have the floor?
Thank you. So I just want to, so this is actually part of a project that's already going right now. You stumbled across an issue and you're looking to get three hundred and fifty thousand dollars essentially in contingency to move forward with the project in a timely manner. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of five, August twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention?
Nay.
Okay, then it does not move forward. It's three to zero to one. So this does not move forward. I got to have four affirmative votes in order. Well, actually, that's not true. The charter talks about three affirmative votes for legislative action. Moving it out of the Cal, it could move to the mayor and council meeting on a three oh one. Because we looked at this once before in the charter. But I, but if it comes to the council as, uh, as a resolution and then if, if I don't have four affirmative votes, then it fails. Okay? All right. We're going to move it with this and we're going to look at the count, we're going to look at charter again. If the charter, if, if I am incorrect, then we will have to come back to the council and see what's going on. But I will let, I will let the council know, uh, the results of my research and more, but I'm pretty sure I'm correct. All right, Leestertown Road reconducting?
Yes, this request is for a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six seventy-five and thirty cents. This is to onboard D and D Electric to perform pole dressing, which is the crossarms, et cetera, and reconducting on the poles on Star Hill Road and Leestertown Road. We've utilized D and D in the past, preferred vendor with us, proven track record. We already have the poles in place and, um, funding will be by the two thousand and sixteen bond fund, which we have in place already. Looking to get this done as soon as possible. This is work that we oftentimes self-perform, but our backlog of work is such to the point that we're going to, it's best for us to self, have this performed by D and D.
Okay, open it to the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Can you explain how we are using bond funds from two thousand and sixteen for a project in twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, this project is on the two thousand and sixteen bond fund and we haven't gotten to it. So this two thousand and sixteen bond fund, we're looking to close hopefully soon. This is like one of the last projects, I think.
Believe the last project. It's been outstanding. We haven't been able to get it done.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move it to mayor and council meeting of five, August twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion carries. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So the salary study, Linda has COVID and as a result of that, we're going to move this to the next Cal. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, council for coming out. And for the counselors that are here, if you want to look at, if you want to talk to me about the front wall project, I'd like to take you out there so you can see firsthand.